Good evening and welcome. I would like to call the Anacortes City Council Meeting of November 14, 2022 to order. Mr. Franciac, would you take the role, please?
Mr. Cutter.
President.
Mr. Young.
Here.
Mr. Walters.
Here.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Here.
Ms. Moulton.
Here.
Mr. McDougal.
Here.
Ms. Hubick.
Here.
Thank you.
Would you all please join me in the pledge? Okay, on to announcements and committee reports. Unfortunately, I've got a bunch of announcements. I'll try to go through them fairly quickly. I want to thank the Port for hosting a great Veterans Day event. I know I saw a number of council members there. So again, thank you for that and participation. Trestle update, let's see. We, we, the target, we're going to have a fundraising kickoff December 6, 5:00 p.m., City Council chambers. As you all know, we're going to try to quickly restore the trestle as soon as possible. We're feeling pretty good about, we've got a couple permits to go. We've got the materials lined up. So now we just need to raise some money to fix the trestle. And the Anacortes Parks Foundation is taking the lead, although I've already got some commitments from some helpful donors, and so we're looking forward to your help there during the giving season. Public safety, I know a number of folks have come in to address the council on public safety. The chief and I, Chief Floyd, are going to host a public safety roundtable, 5:00 p.m. on the 21st. That'll be just before the council meeting on the 21st. And that also will lead into that, we planned on having on the agenda, the ordinances that council has prepared to help deal with some of these issues that we're having. Tomorrow, we are happy to host the Washington State Transportation Commission, both Tuesday and Wednesday here at City Hall. You do need to preregister to participate at WTC.wa.gov. Again, we're, we're hosting that event, so hopefully we can influence some of the transportation things going on in the state of Washington. And there are some, if you're on Zoom, although I have, I see a two, a couple attendees, we are experiencing occasional loss of camera feed for about two seconds before the picture is ordered. We believe it's a Zoom issue. And I think that is it for announcements from me. On to committee reports, Economic Development Committee report.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Hubick.
Thank you. We met back on the 8th. Councilmember Christine Cleland McGrath and I were there. We went over the outline that EDASK has provided for us to focus on how do we talk about economic development? Who do we reach out to? What topics do we need to spend time talking with them? What are the interviews going to look like? We took a look at this two and a half page document and just really made suggestions on who to add, who to kind of rearrange, people that we think would be appropriate to bring into different conversations. So we also looked over a timeline. EDASK has put together kind of looking at quarters over the rest of '22, which isn't very long, and going into '23 and '24. We made a couple of comments back to that, and staff is communicating with us back to EDASK, and we hope to have them join us in our next meeting in December.
All right. Next, we have the Public Safety Committee report.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Cleland.
Thanks. Yeah, so we were very active this last week. So we had our first public safety meeting on Wednesday, November 9. All the council members were there along with Mayor Miller, and we had both Chief Floyd and Chief Harris there. You know, the majority of that meeting really discussed the parking trespassing and sidewalk ordinances that will be on the, on the agenda for next week, kind of implementation of them, challenges surrounding them, and, and all of that. I think we're excited to try to give the police one more tool. You know, there's a lot of layers involved beyond writing the ticket, but you know, we're trying to do, from a legislative branch, what we can to help with the executive branch. We had some quick questions about the jail that we're going to try to get answers to, and then also got some feedback from some, from the police department about tweaks for those ordinances. And then finally, we kind of finished out, we had about 15 minutes left to talk about the potential discussion of doing some type of a levy lid lift for both police and fire kind of came out of our discussion for the budget last week. Quickly determined that we needed more time, so we did two additional meetings. One on November 10 with Chief Floyd, where we kind of talked about why we have four vacancies currently, the challenges of our fire department was, or not, sorry, not fire, police department with scheduling, what strengths we have. They're incredible people, but they, we're on a five day, eight, eight and a half hour shift, where most are four tens. And so we kind of discussed scheduling and what, what would go into adding some more positions there and switching, and some of those logistics, which I think we will get into later. And then finally, just earlier today, we focused with Chief Harris and had about an hour and a half conversation about the fire and what options there are to address ongoing staffing challenges. You know, we, our departments incredible, both fire and police, but they are on a shoestring budget, and they all do a ton of work. And as we see our community grow, as we see more density, and as we have higher expectations for the way they interact with the public, we're seeing that there might be need to add some positions. So again, unfortunately, I think the chances of us getting the SAFER grant this year, which would have been a grant for three additional firefighters, we have not heard back, and we've also heard that they've kind of suspended funding for the rest of the year, so we're, we don't have a lot of hope for the 2023 budget. But you know, it was a really good conversation, and I think it'll help us discuss, discuss the discussion later in our meeting. And that's it.
Thank you. Parks, oh, next is reappointments, Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission. And I don't know, Mr. Lunsford, I think I can handle this one, not make you come all the way up here. So I would like to have council's confirmation to reappoint both Brad Adams and Joanne York-Gilmore. I really appreciate the contribution of these volunteers, their willingness to serve the community, and I would like to ask council for a motion to reappoint these folks.
Mayor Miller.
Or if you have any questions. Ms. Moulton.
I move that Brad Adams and Joanne York-Gilmore in the, with no other input, unless something's going to happen, be reappointed to the Parks and Recreation Committee.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Ms. Moulton, a second by Mr. Young, to appoint Brad Adams and Joanne York-Gilmore, reappoint them for a five-year term on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. And more reappointments, this time the Arts Commission. I have Zachary Wright and Laura Hamilton have agreed to do another term. Again, I, we can't do, we can't do the work of the city without these volunteers and appreciate their efforts. So again, thank you for being willing to sign up for another, another term. So any questions from council for the Arts Commission reappointments? All right.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Hubick.
I move that Zachary Wright and Laura Hamilton be reappointed to the Arts Commission.
Second.
Hey, a motion by Ms. Hubick, second by Mr. Carter for the reappointments of Zachary Wright and Laura Hamilton. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you for that. And finally, Forest Board appointment. This is a new person, again, willing to serve on the Forest Advisory Board to fill an open position due to a resignation of a current member, board member, and this is Nathan Schrank. And I knew I'd mispronounced that, even though I tried several times. But any questions or recommended motion?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young.
I make a motion we approve those appointments as presented.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Young, second by Ms. Hubick to appoint Nathan Schrank to the Forest Advisory Board. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you for those, and again, thank you for volunteering to help this great city. All right, any other announcements or committee reports that may have missed? All right, on to item four, public comment. I know we don't have anybody signed up, but this is the opportunity to address council on any items that is not on the agenda. This is your time to come up and speak. Looking, I've got two attendees online. Okay. Going once. All right, moving on to our consent agenda, items five, A, B, C, and D, council.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. McDougal.
Move to approve items A through D on the consent agenda.
Second.
Yeah, motion by Mr. McDougal, second by Ms. Hubick to approve consent agenda items A through D. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, we're on to item six, public hearings. And this is, item six A is capital facilities plan, which Mr. Hoagland will bring up the ordinance, I believe, and, and then the 2023 budget, which is why everybody's here, to talk about the budget and where we are.
Right, thank you, Mayor, members of the council, members of the audience. We have the final CFP here tonight. The, this document was not included in the council packet. I really apologize. It took us longer to get this finalized than I was hoping. I got an email from Ms. Moulton earlier today looking for it, and I'm sure the rest of you were wondering as well. So I do apologize, but we had a few of the stories to finalize. The stories are the individual capital project items that have the details of those projects. All of those are finalized now. You'll see a total of 334 pages, including the first page, which is the ordinance for all seven years across all departments totaling 273.4 million. So I do, I believe this is the completed CFP. I believe we have addressed all the issues council has been looking for. I'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have about this, and the public hearing is still up, and so if there members of the public could wish to comment.
So we can start with that, start the discussion, see if any members of the public want to comment on the 334 pages of the capital facilities plan? Okay, I'm sure council will have some comments.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hoagland, and I appreciate your taking the time to get back to me on the emails that you receive from me on Mondays when I write them over the weekends. I know Mondays are a busy day, so, so thank you for that. I have tried to explore some of it in OpenGov, and I'm not adept yet, so I would still like some more details before I feel really comfortable voting for this. I have to say for the moment.
Yes, and now that you have the CFP, the PDF version, a little bit easier to, to go through, yeah, that's.
Yeah, definitely. And we'll get this out on the, on the city website, and I can, I can link this individually to the council members as well, making it easier to go through all of this. Be happy to bring this back to council next week for further consideration.
Again, the stories do look nice in OpenGov, but getting to the stories seems to be a little bit of a challenge. Mayor Miller. Mr. Walters.
Yeah, I would just like to echo Ms. Moulton's comments. I appreciate the PDF because we'll be able to linearly go through it. The OpenGov stories are a nice addition, and it's nice to be able to bring up one individual project that you're looking for, but to navigate through every one is a challenge, and we need to navigate through every one. So the, the PDF will assumedly, you've got it on the screen, this is what it looks like, right? It'll assumedly be pretty straightforward for us to go through it.
Yeah, exactly. So as, as you scroll through, you'll be able to see the, the setup in some of the exterior pages are the same that we've had in prior years, some of the backup information. But then getting into the projects here, these are all linked, grouped by, you know, department, and then linked so you can scroll down, you know, dig into each.
So you say the narrative at the beginning is the same as what we've had in prior years?
Yeah, it's the same, generally the same format that we've used in the past, so it should look familiar to users.
Okay. And this is, this is essentially the six-year financing plan that meets the requirement for, for that component of our capital facilities plan, right?
Yes, that's right.
So our, our capital facilities element in the comprehensive plan remains and is still good and isn't replaced by this document? The chapters on capital facilities in the comprehensive plan.
Yeah, so this is, the CFP is the capital element of the comprehensive plan?
The six-year financing plan.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, well, I'm looking forward to scrolling through the 334 pages.
And, and again, I encourage council, if you, if you have any, anything that you find, please bring it, bring it to staff's attention, and we'll, we'll work on it. Mr. Young.
Thank you, Mayor Miller. Just wanted to echo what the other council members have already said, but really also to echo how much I appreciate the hard work that went into this. I know it's been a tremendous undertaking, particularly as it relates to having new software, and also, you know, with the completeness of details and going into the linkages to make sure that the public has as much transparency as humanly possible at this moment. So I do look forward to the PDF version as well, but I just also wanted to thank you, the team, the staff, and the mayor for putting this together. Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Those are kind words, and I appreciate the understanding of the, the magnitude, particularly this year, the first year in putting this together in OpenGov, there was a kind of a, kind of a big hill to get over. It'll be easier going forward now, just maintaining and adding the new projects, but it was a pretty significant undertaking, not just by finance, all of the departments involved chipped in to, you know, do their stories and, and those parts of the, of the CFP. But I appreciate that, thank you.
And, and as we look to improve the product, I would encourage council to take a look at the, some of the areas where we, we tried to come up with the, with the priority piece, because that was really, really challenging, as we've all discussed before, how hard it is to, to do prioritization in that, given, given the environment and, and the legend that we, we think we came up with that, that makes sense. So again, enjoy, enjoy the reading.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
I guess I do have a question on that. If, if this PDF is composed of prints of the stories, I don't think that we could find those priorities on the stories. So is that in here now?
That's, obviously, we didn't assign, there, there weren't assigned priorities to all the projects. I think we started with the REIT, the REIT funded was the, was the experiment. Yeah, and they may not have carried over.
Yeah, no, that's a, that might have been in the budgeting aspect of that, now that you mention that. Sorry, we're getting a little bit, a little bit removed from that initial budget process, so that may have been the point where we identified those, those five priorities.
Yeah, so that, and that's where we look, look at OpenGov as a positive thing, that that was one of the capabilities that gave us over the PDF, I guess. Okay. It's a good question, though.
Yeah.
Any other CFP questions? Make sure you have what you need. All right, now the fun stuff, over to the 2023 budget ordinance and discussion of the 2023 budget.
Mayor Miller. So I did want to point out that we do have the, the ordinance prepared, ordinance 4034. We've had a lot of discussion about the budget since our last meeting last Monday, and if I, if I could point out a couple of things that we have been talking about. So what we have, what we have tonight in front of us, the, does include $3,000 in increased training budget for the Legislative Department. What we have been talking about, that we kind of concluded our discussions about edits to the budget that Mayor and I earlier, earlier this evening, late this afternoon, but what I'd like to do is bring back the budget next week that includes two additional FTE for the Fire EMS Department. This is something that we talked about in the Public Safety Committee today. As council may remember, those staff are split between the Fire Department and the EMS Department on an 80/20 split to represent the call volume split between those departments. That would add an additional roughly 60,000 to the Fire budget, 240,000 to the EMS budget. That's assuming 150,000 roughly per FTE, fully, fully loaded cost. And then also an additional 26,000 in the legislative budget, and that would be a budget set aside to potentially pay for the cost of running a ballot initiative next year. So that's based on what it costs, the last time we ran a ballot initiative for the, I believe that was the Affordable Housing Sales Tax, and that was about 26,000 cost to us. So that would be replicated in the budget next time around.
Yeah, and I'll make a quick comment while Chief Harris is coming up here to answer any questions on the, on the additional FTEs. As you're probably aware, we talked about this a little bit at the council retreat back in May, I think, and, and we were kind of betting on the SAFER grant to help us out in staffing for Fire and EMS. As I said, we're about 99% sure that's not going to happen. At the same time, we've got a request from both the Police and Fire Guild to, to do what we said we were going to do a couple of years back with looking at a potential levy list lid as we move forward. So we've had, like Ms. Cleland pointed out, we've had a number of really good Public Safety Committee meetings where I think certainly, I'll try to speak a little bit for the committee that we're kind of in unison, that we want to move forward with a levy lift lid, but we need to figure out how to, how to best do that. But in the meantime, this, the, the risk to the budget, we were able to take a look at the 110 fund, I think, the ambulance fund, that we could kind of fill the gap, fill that safer gap until we get to a more stable funding source. So I'll stop talking for a minute, and Chief can talk about how he made a, long ago, made a really good presentation for this, this addition.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The, so we had certainly hoped to get the SAFER grant. That would take pressure off of all of our funds. Well, it hasn't been official, we haven't received an official notice yet this year. They stopped giving out funds early September, or, and there hasn't been anything. So it still shows pending on their websites, but for all intents and purposes, I believe it to be a failure. So what we're looking to do, the request was to, well, that was for three, that would get us to round the shifts out, plus a floater. However, EMS funds would not support three, so I asked for two back in the budget.
So, Mr. Young.
Chief, would you speak just a little closer into the microphone? I'm just having a little bit of problem hearing. Thank you.
Sure. So currently, AFD has 25 line FTEs, divided into two shifts of eight and one of nine. The two new FTEs would allow us to balance those three shifts with nine each. What nine does is it gets us to, with time off, that gets us to seven most of the time each day, each day. When we have seven on duty, it allows us to do a couple of things. It allows us to meet the legal two-in-one-out requirements for confirmed rescues at our busiest station, which is Station One Downtown. It also allows, what we're doing is, we currently have three on occasion, and we've been kind of trialing it out this year. The shift supervisor is flexing into an SUV where they can break away and support second calls, or support the other stations for serious calls. To date, so far, it's a week old data, but a week ago, we'd already had 672 times this year when there's been two or more calls happening at the same time. So that flexibility is becoming more and more critical as our call volume grows. That's kind of the gist of the request. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
And again, understand that this is a short-term kind of solution as we, as we fully flush out our, our staff, staffing needs as we work towards a levy lift. But council, any questions? Mr. McDougal.
Yeah, thank you, Chief. The 80/20 split, and can you remind me, basically, the county covers the 20. I assume the 20% is the, for calls outside of city limits?
No, the way it works, so the county pays us, don't quote me, it's about $1.9 million a year, I believe, to supplement the EMS system countywide. That really doesn't figure into that number. The 80/20 split, as we divide our fund up between general fund, the 001 accounts, and the 110 EMS fund accounts, it gets confusing, the EMS fund, because there is some general fund money in that account as well. But it's revenues from EMS billing, it's from the levy funds that come from the county, as well as some supplementation from the general fund. But based on call volume, and the, and GEMT, which is a reimbursement from the government to, to offset the fact that we can't bill for Medicaid patients, is significant. And there's a huge formula that goes into that, and actually, HEICO is much more knowledgeable about that than I am. But really, we figure that because our call volume is about 80% EMS. That's why we, we split about 80% of our funds, of our salaries into the EMS fund.
Got it, thank you.
Ms. Moulton.
Thanks. Thank you, Chief Harris. So the number in our packet of the ambulance service fund, does that change based on this proposal? Or is this the?
Yeah, I believe it doesn't reflect in anything you see yet.
I'm sorry?
The numbers would not reflect in any documents.
Okay, so this is the new, up on the screen. Okay, thank you.
Oh, sorry. I didn't, I was, the budget packets, okay.
And so what I'm seeing is a short-term proposal, when I'm not, and so then there's the levy lift, and that could potentially be run in February with the $26,000 increase in the legislative budget?
Yeah, so the initial proposal was made prior to any conversations about a levy lid lift, and the, the point was, was about a two-year stop. The EMS reserves, in my estimation, can support these positions for up to two years. Not ideal, one's much better, but that was to bridge the gap with the fiber buildout. With the discussions now of the levy lid lift, that kind of changes things a little bit and can hopefully bring things one year sooner to support that, if that makes sense.
And I think maybe for any members of the public that might be watching and heard levy lift lid for the very first time, probably we should talk a little bit about that, some more what that actually means. It, it means lifting the property tax up in order to pay for this. A good example would be Oak Harbor of what they've recently done for the November Public Safety Levy Lift Lid. And this is not just about the Fire Department, although, again, we were talking about Fire Department staffing early on in this budget cycle before the discussion of the levy lift lid came up. And the levy lift lid would include police officers as well, is the, is the idea. At least that's how I interpret it from the Public Safety Committee, and Public Safety Committee can correct me if I'm wrong, if, on any of this stuff, is, would be just fine.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
I would really look forward to seeing the numbers and an outline of what this I would really look forward to seeing the numbers and an outline of what this proposal would provide, and what the six firefighters propose with a levy lid lift would result in for our staffing and our coverage. It's, I will look, that would be great to see, because it's hard to look at this and see how that's really going to shake down on the ground, based on what we have been requested.
You mean the difference, I'm sorry, the differences between what the six and two would provide?
Yes, like maybe Mr. McDougal just said, like a table format, what you described versus what the six firefighters that have been requested by the union would provide. It would be great to see those differences.
Absolutely. And just in one, just a piece that I feel like might be getting confused a little bit, is this isn't in lieu of the levy lid lift. This is, doesn't change the fact that we're still looking to add six, but the way I have been reading on the MRSC website, no matter when we were to pass a levy lid lift in 2023, none of those funds would become available to us until 2024. So unless I'm mistaken, this really, it's a separate item to that levy lid lift. It's not in lieu of, or a replacement. I mean, I'm happy to provide the documents you're asking for, but I just want to clarify that it's not looking.
And in part of that discussion of the levy lift lid, we'll be getting those kind of exact numbers. What does six mean? What does 10 mean? What does 12 mean? This is a proposal for the 2023 budget. And again, I would argue it's a stopgap to kind of put a Band-Aid on it, or a tourniquet, as one of the union firefighter leadership says. I'm like, okay, okay, a tourniquet more than a Band-Aid.
So, okay, great. I do have one additional question about that. So with this proposal, would, so we have $300,000 that has just appeared in this proposal. Is this, so a levy lid lift would presumably pay for, take over that $300,000, so we're not continuing to pay that in future years? Okay, great, thank you.
Go ahead.
The way that I was understanding it today was, we say the levy lid, but were to pass for six firefighters, this has been discussed. Instead of hiring the six in 2024, we'd hire two in 2023 and four more in 2024. That's okay, yeah.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
To throw another bit of a wrinkle on it, in the Finance Committee, we have talked about the potential for restructuring how our funds are organized in the budget. And in particular, we've talked about the Ambulance Service Fund, but also the Parks Fund, or the Library Fund, and how they have their own fund structure and their own reserves, yet they're general revenue funded. And I think the conclusion was, the Ambulance Service Fund could be, by ordinance, rolled into the General Fund and not counted as a separate fund. Yes, the county provides us money, but it doesn't have to go into an Ambulance Service Fund. The upshot of all that would be, we could be more flexible with how it is we distribute the money. We could pay for firefighters and fire medics, the medical side of it, out of general revenue dollars and the money that we get from the county. And we could take that $1 million and put it into our General Fund Reserve. Now, assuming that's true, it may not make the most sense to fund firefighters out of it at this point, because we can't fund them indefinitely. One of our, I think it's probably one of our financial policies, is not fund staff with one-time revenues, or in this case, with reserves. So obviously, we're hopeful that a levy lid lift would allow us to hire and fund firefighters long-term, but in the event a levy lid lift fails, we would be stuck, because it wouldn't have a funding source associated with those two new positions. We'd have to dig in General Fund reserves to accomplish that. And certainly, we could, but it would result in pretty significant cuts to other departments that we also don't want to, we don't want to cut. So I'm not very excited about digging into reserves to do this, although I could be convinced. I do take your point that, you know, even with a levy lid lift, we don't actually realize the money until 2024, although we could do preparatory work. And also, if, another alternative to this is if we put the levy lid lift on the ballot, the levy lid lift passes, we could then authorize money from reserves, because we know that we are going to have a funding stream. And so midway through 2023, we could hire more police and/or fire, whichever we want to fund at that moment, in the quantity that we want to fund at that moment, knowing that we'll have those funds arriving the following year. So that might be an alternative to this as well.
Yeah, like I say, the original, when I made the proposal and did the math back in the springtime, it had to do not with levy lift, but to support, as a stopgap or tourniquet, until the fiber buildout was complete, which I understand is supposed to be around 2025. So it would, yeah, it's certainly not a, if there were to be no levy lid lift, it would certainly not be a long-term solution. Something significant would have to change, no question.
Yeah, and the significant change is either fiber, you know, we get behind, this is why I presented council with a very constrained budget for 2023, because 2023, as you all heard me like a broken record, we still have $8 million of fiber to do, and there's a lot of, there's a lot of risk still out there with the way the economic environment is. So that's why initially I turned down the two FTEs there, because it just, the risks seem too high. But now there's an opportunity with the, using the ambulance, the 110 Fund to bridge that gap till either past fiber, worst case, or best case, a levy lift lid for a long-term funding solution. Ms. Cleland?
Thank you. It is, it's a bit confusing, so I appreciate Ms. Moulton's questions. We've had quite a few hours of conversation about this, so I have a little bit better understanding of, yes, it's a stopgap, so that there's three people working at Station One. It allows that third person to kind of float and assist wherever is most necessary. And that would be, what would be achieved with this proposal of two Fire EMS folks being hired this year, correct?
So they would be, it's our captain that's in that spot, but they're operating similar to what a battalion chief would in a larger system, if that's what you're asking.
Thank you. So I guess my question, and Mr. Walters brings up the fact that this money could be moved to General Fund. I mean, what are, I would like to have a better understanding of if we use this money for these two firefighters, or whatever else, what other, what are we giving up, right? What else can this be used for? And my initial thought is, can this be used for Station Three of some sort, either to secure property, or down payment on property, or a facility? Can anyone, can you guys speak to that? Is that an option for this fund, if it were to go to General and then be used? Because that's kind of our other big expensive thing out there when it comes to fire.
Yeah, so the way that I would understand it is, again, if we were to build a new Fire and EMS station, or purchase the Molly Lane facility, it's utilized a portion of that for EMS. And then again, there's formulas that we have to kind of utilize, it's an opinion, but the same formulas that allow us for the GEMT reimbursements, we utilize square footage of the stations, we utilize percentage of EMS calls, and we don't want to deviate too far from that, because that's nearly a million dollars a year of revenue we get from GMT, and in an odd or something like that, we wouldn't want to lose that. So yeah, I believe some of that could be utilized in that manner. But again, the balance isn't huge. I mean, it's 860,000, give or take, right now. That doesn't go a long ways towards a new building. But yes, down payments, things like that, it's possible.
That was the long answer of, yes, you can use 110 Fund for some amount of building, and Steve won't get a finding for that. Mayor Miller? Mr. Walters?
Well, and I had $1,086,000 in the 110 Fund on November 2nd. Does it fluctuate substantially?
Yes, it's fair for the money guy to answer that one.
Yeah, no, it's a good question. So we've kind of been knocking around the number today of 850,000, and I didn't do, I haven't done like a cash report recently, so is that?
Right.
Is that out of an Eden report that?
Yeah, an Eden report from November 2nd.
Yeah, so I apologize, that's, so that is what it is. As Chief Harris pointed out, there is General Fund, he referred to it as General Fund money, or General Money that goes into the EMS Fund, that's property tax. So there's generally kind of two tranches of property tax funding per year that come in in May and November. So I, that's likely the second tranche of property tax funding had just hit that fund. That's my guess, and why it kind of jumped up to that million level. And that's, my expectation is probably that that's where we'll end the years around that.
So maybe about a million? You have a pre-programmed deposit of that property tax in the accounting system to that fund?
Yeah, that's right. We do that allocation when the receipt comes into the accounting system, so it gets split out to those funds automatically through that.
And so to my question of, you know, do we need to have a separate fund for this? Because Fire can live in the General Fund. EMS also could live in the General Fund, in 001?
Yeah, it's quite true. So for, the whole time I've been with the city, the EMS Fund has had a separate accounting fund, and it was set up like that initially, because way back in the early 2000s, maybe around 2000, 2001, when the county started the ambulance program, the city was the contractor for ambulance service here on Fidalgo Island. And it was easier, and it painted a more clear picture of the fiscal situation of the ambulance fund, to have that separate fund, where you could see those ambulance revenues and EMS levy revenues coming into that fund, against the expenditures that were posted for the ambulance service.
So I generally advocate that anyway, roll in that fund into the General Fund, simply because it makes everything simpler. You can look at one department in the General Fund and see how much the salaries are, and see how much their other expenses are, and you don't have to break it up. I mean, surely, there is some argument to be made for the fund even now, but is it worth the complexity that it adds? But then the next question is, what would you do with the money if you rolled it into the General Fund? And I think the logical conclusion here is that it doesn't have to be restricted. Fire revenue, or fire expenses, so it could in fact go to pay down fiber. And maybe that would be more desirable, because we would then avoid a million dollars' worth of bond interest.
You mean those property taxes that are currently going into the ambulance fund? Is what you're?
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, quite true. Those are general tax revenues, those property taxes.
Of course, you know, who knows how it shakes out, because there are competing needs here, but that should be a consideration, I think.
I think at this point, what we're looking for is support for the two FTEs using the fund that we have now. As we, you know, I made a commitment to, I think, to the, both the police and the Fire Unions, that I would support a levy lift lid to meet our staffing needs, both in the Police Department and the Fire Department. Obviously, the challenge in the Police Department, we're still down four commissioned officers, and that, and, you know, we had two interviews last week, and we'd be lucky to have them on patrol by August, you know, August of next year, just the way the hiring market is for that. But again, recognizing that we're trying to answer both the public safety issues that I think we all agree with. Mr. Young, looks like you were.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to make sure, I am following the complexities of all of this in listening to the Chief's explanation, and listening to Ms. Cleland McGrath's question, and listening to Mr. Walters' question, though, if I'm still following, that the request that we have right now is to use the fund for this, these two things right now. And I think Mr. Walters' question is about rolling, well, one of the points is about rolling the fund into the General Fund, and that allows us the flexibility to, you know, fund the things that we want. We may want to do something else, and to Ms. Cleland McGrath's question was, what other things can this fund be used for? And I think that what it's probably been speaking to is having that flexibility by council. If I'm correct, I think that the issue before us right now is, can, should we do this, even though we still may decide at some further point down the line to roll, if, you know, we decide that it's better to roll it over into the General Fund? That's what's before us right now, and this, what we should be deciding right now. Am I correct, Mayor?
Yes.
There's a lot to this. Everybody's got a point about it that I hear, but tell us exactly what you're asking us to do right now.
Well, so in the budget that I presented to council, there was all of one and one-half FTE. And the request is adding these two additional FTEs, which, again, we've heard from our public safety professionals, we've heard from council, that that's not enough to answer the public safety staffing needs. So the, so that's a separate, this is a stopgap measure to get to a levy lift lid, that we still have a lot of work to do, to put together. Not only, you know, I've gotten four, three or four responses from MRSC, and it's still a little unclear whether it needs to be a one-year or a multi-year levy lift lid, and that determines at what time of year you can put that on the ballot, whether it can be a February, April, August, or November. This is kind of the first time we've discussed this publicly, which is great, but we need to enjoin the public in this conversation. So again, this is just, this is just an add for the 2023 budget, and then, and which would get us to a point where we can, you know, again, put the mandate on a known staffing issue that we were discussing long before an overall public safety levy lift, that was risky to do based on the fact that we still, I'll emphasize it again, we still do not know exactly how much our fiber cost is going to be in 2023. We're getting really close, and council did provide, and yes, I voted for when I was on council, to lower the reserve threshold to 17%, that allowed for us to buy down fiber, to the point where you get to sometime in, I hate to promise February, but I'll look at Emily and say, we want it to be in February, where we know exactly what we think we're going to pay for fiber, and then it'll be, it'll be pretty well settled then.
So just to follow up to that, if it's okay? Yep, no, I get it. So, you know, basically, I think, to address Mr. Walters and Ms. Cleland McGrath's question, we can still address that later, even after this. And so, yeah.
And again, there's been a lot of discussion about a February, you know, running this February ballot, so of course, you know, I've been in the government too long, I don't believe we reinvent the wheel too often in government, so I called my counterpart over in Oak Harbor and said, hey, how did you do this? Said, well, we spent a year putting this together. And again, it was proven successful. I have very serious concerns about putting it together, getting all the right numbers, getting the exact wording correct for a February. If it's the right thing to do, for the, which I believe it is, for the public and the public safety departments, we don't need to play games about putting it on the ballot when there's less voting or anything like that. We'll get it on the ballot in enough time to get it right on the ballot, and if it's the, the voters will support it if it's the right thing to do. So again, that's been the only resistance that I think you saw in the Public Safety Committee meeting, and my discussions with the Police and Fire Unions, that that's been a little resistance on my part. Yeah, Ms. Cleland, yeah, now it's time to chime in.
So, thank you. Yeah, I think we're all in agreement that there is, that we have incredible police and fire, but there, as our community has grown... incredible police and fire, but there, as our community has grown and demands have expanded, there is a gap that fortunately our professionals do really well responding to, but it's not necessarily sustainable. So I guess, to pull the Band-Aid off, I mean, talking about the proposal of two FTEs paid for out of the 110 fund for two years, sure, but we can't talk about that in a, in a vacuum. It has to be in conjunction with this, the potential levy lid lift. And at some point, we have to just talk about it if this is the right thing to do. You know, as public safety, I don't know about my other counterparts who were at those meetings, you know, the, the debate of whether we wait until fiber is done because that is our level, that our, that was our commitment, and it's a multi-year commitment, and it's a huge amount of money with still a number of unknowns. Do we wait until that's completed or further along before we start talking about these, this public safety issue and the level of commitment that it's going to cost to fund, you know, anywhere from four fi, four police and six to eight firefighters? You know, that's a, that's, yes, that, those are some really large number in ongoing costs year over year, right? And we know all of those will be affected by COLA, and we know there's a lot of change that will happen. But it's, but I'm really uncomfortable with, as we keep hearing about the lag time of putting this in the budget, then putting the position out for hire, and then hiring, hiring for that position, and then the training associated. I mean, we're talking two, three years out. And I don't think it's right when we've known this has been a problem for a number of years, and we've, we've tried to add one position or two positions to police and fire over the years, which has been helpful and I think has had an impact. But now is the time, while we're talking about the, the budget for 2023, to have a real deep dive of where, where our deficiencies have been. And it's our responsibility of kind of continuing those deficiencies and how, what our plan is. And I, I am really uncomfortable with using fiber as the excuse if what we're actually talking about is doing a lid lift, which is totally, that is not affecting, you know, the ability to pay for fiber and our, our reserves and all of that, right? This is, this is additional, this is a new fu, not a new funding source, but a funding source that is being expanded, that does not have an effect on the ability for fiber to be completed or to be paid for. This is really something that I think needs to be dealt with now so that we're not waiting three, four years to then talk about it and, and realize we probably need to do a lid lift now, lid lift later. You know, when we talk about, yes, there are four empty, four vacant positions on police, the biggest challenge, we keep hearing from the police department, both from the chief and also from the union, is the fact that we are, have eight, five, or five, eight and a half hour days. We're kind of the last, the last ones doing that. The majority of our police department don't live in town, so they're commuting. What they would like to have, which is what is much more common across the, this general area, is to do four 10-hour days. That is better for responding to calls, for doing all the, the documentation that's required, and it also then builds in time for training on a weekly basis. So I think that this, these are some of the conversations. I think that public safety as a committee and then the rest of council, like, we need to have these conversations now. The other component is timing for if and when we get to the point where we want to, you know, do a resolution to do a levy lid lift and send that to the county, is the timing of it. But we, it's, it's an uncomfortable conversation to have, and it's time to have it now. So I'd like to hear what the rest of folks think, because I'm really not comfortable doing the two FTEs out of the 110 fund without having this conversation at the same time.
I just want to make sure that, that I was heard correct. Fiber does not have anything, fiber has a lot to do with the 2023 budget. Fiber wouldn't have anything to do with a levy lift lid as far as, you know, impacting the other, because like you pointed out, it's a, it's a separate thing. I, I thought it, again, this, and fiber will still be able to fund it with these two FTEs and will still be able to do the levy lift lid. So I just want to make that completely clear, that we're able to do all of that. It's the, it's the time, it's, it's the timing of it, where I will try to quote Mayor Severance when I said that you're going to try to do this in February. He said, that's insane amount of time to get ready for that. And he said, I could quote him on that. So, you know, we, I believe we can get our ducks in a row to do this properly and present it to the voters and make, make all of the timing and make the police and fire department whole, or at least get them there. Because I do understand it's an important recruiting tool, even if we can't hire police officers, to tell them that we are working to a 10 and a half hour shift. So.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. I really appreciate the points that Ms. Cleland McGrath brings up and to encourage us to figure this out. It's our job. So I, I think that the Oak Harbor levy lid lift was something like 98 cents, and we're asking for 30. And I'm not sure how long our preparation was for the yes on housing, affordable housing tax, but it was, it was not much longer than this window would be, as I recall. And if we're going to do this, I mean, I appreciate the stopgap measure. Again, I have some hesitation of taking $300,000 out of the budget or out of these reserves. I'm not totally convinced. And fiber's going to, we'll be paying for fiber for, I know you said it's a separate conversation, but we're paying for fiber for a very long time. So that doesn't really factor into this conversation where the money is going to come from or how much we'll have in three years or five years. So my, my feeling is, and I look forward to discussion on this, is that if we're going to do this, let's do this. What is the advantage of waiting? What is the advantage of waiting if we're going to do it?
Mr. Big Google.
I'm, thank you both, Ms. Cleland McGrath and Moulton. I'm in definite agreement. I'm very much in support of the levy lid lift idea and, but I did have a couple of very quick questions. Our options for basically putting it in front of the voters are February of next year versus November of next year, is that right? Or is there other options?
So February, April, August, and November, unless it's a multi-year levy lift. And my understanding from the multiple interpretations of the RCWs that recover, cover this, if it's a multi-year, it has to be in an August or a November ballot.
A multi-year, is it like implemented over?
Yeah, again, that's not, you know, getting the numbers straight first, you know, we, I've got a lot of experts on staff here, but not experts in everything and every detail. And we're still trying to get to the bottom of what, first, once we get the numbers settled out, how much, how many officers, how much it's going to cost, it, does it need to be a multi-year?
Got it, got it. Okay. Yeah, so there's four options next year. And regardless, like, let's say it passes, regardless of if it's February, April, August, November, funds become available in 2024, like after kind of the first sort of property tax payments are all made, so May 2024 ballpark, regardless?
And I'm looking for a heading out for Steve. I mean, I think that's the, it would come in the property tax collection receipts.
Okay, got it. So if it, if it happened in November, that wouldn't change when the revenue would come in versus like if it happened in April, same revenue date, so to speak. Okay.
But again, to the argument of do this with some haste, you know, it allows us to break away from the 110 fund and start, and start funding the additional, once, once we get it authorized, passed and authorized.
Yeah, understood.
I, I get the argument.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
A couple of different points here. First of all, the Oak Harbor Public Safety levy that they just passed was like, it was both a levy and a bond. It was more than three times this amount, as has been mentioned. And they were also building a new station with that money. So it was quite a bit more complicated than what we're talking about here. I do think that we shouldn't have anyone take away a conflict between fiber and public safety from this meeting. Just at a 10,000-foot level, you know, we've, we've got a big expense for fiber this next year, but we've also had big expenses for fiber in the past couple of years. If it's $8 million, you know, we're not finding that out of the budget. We, there's no amount of squeezing of the budget that can yield us $8 million for the fiber build out. But at that 10,000-foot level, we bond it, we pay for the debt service out of fiber revenues. So it really is, is not about a conflict with our other priorities. It, it does need to pay for itself over time, but it will also be paying for itself for a very long time. We, I, I come back to, we shouldn't fund staffing or other ongoing expenses out of one-time revenues or reserves. But if we do pass a levy lid lift, then we would know that the property tax is going to be available to fund staffing on an ongoing basis for police and for fire. And then I would feel comfortable taking money out of reserves to fill that gap. So yeah, property tax comes in twice per year, but we don't wait for the property tax to come in because, you know, we have reserves, so we can cash flow that until the property tax comes in as part of the annual budget. I do also think that it's, it's very clear what we're talking about is a, is a permanent one-year levy lid lift, no phase-in, not a multi-year. Under a multi-year, you raise property tax, and then the next year you raise the property tax, and the year after that, up to six years, you raise the property tax again. What we're talking about is raising property tax one time and then go through one process to hire four police officers, six firefighters, so that we can staff up, change the shift structure, staff a fire engine at, at Station One, and make those changes at once, not any kind of phase-in. So with a permanent one-year levy, the total lid is raised by the amount of the levy, and then that becomes your new basis for any 1% property tax increase each year. And then there's no constraint on whether you hold the election in February, April, August, or November. I do think February is a little cheaper probably than April to run a ballot measure, but waiting until the end of the year, I think, is unnecessary and undesirable. Because if we pass it in February, or if we pass it in April, we can start doing the work. We can start advertising, we can start hiring even if we come back and amend the budget to add people based on reserves, because we know that funding stream is going to be available. And that would be my preference.
So just, just one, one correction on the costs of the ballot. Typically, it's more expensive to run a ballot measure in, for an acordus in February when there aren't any other budget, because then it's a shared cost. So if it's along with a primary or general election, like we have some coming up for members of council, that could potentially be on an August or a, or a November ballot. So it is actually, would be slightly, we, we use the high number, that, that number that Mr. Hoagland provided is, is for a, just us on the ballot, if, if I'm getting that correctly. So, Mr. Young.
Thank you. For me, just sort of my history of being involved in elections from ground level to national level, the thing that I've found from my winning and losing campaigning is that in order to tell the story of why this is important, why this is a great use of funds, why this increase is so necessary to who we are, what we are, and what we want to do, you know, I'm of the opinion that if we take a little bit longer, that story can be told. And then the chances of success, in my opinion, increases with the ability to educate the public on what this really is all about, when they make the decisions that they want to make about whether they think this is valid, whether they think this is a good idea. So, you know, not that I'm disagreeing with, you know, my fellow council members, I just think that a run-up, a longer run-up is a good thing for the ballot initiative for us as a city, because I think that we really need to have a consistent story, consistent talking point, and the ability to just educate the public and ourselves on how this benefits us and how it protects and makes lives for the very people that are working with us and protecting the families. Successful, you know, people are burnt out. And so, you know, I do think this schedule change could be beneficial, you know, and, but I do want the, I believe that this initiative is a good initiative right now until I hear something very different. But I believe it's a good initiative. And I think in that, you know, I think we do need time to educate the public on why it's important and why when they, we do the ballot initiative, that they vote with us and trying to approve it. So I think that that's important. And so, but not ignoring the fact that it is a risk in the sense that, you know, funding this now, I still think that it benefits us. And I think that we, personally, I think that we need to honor that commitment that we made to, you know, to the union as well as to the other groups of people that we would help them. And so I'm leaning toward moving forward myself, recognizing that there's a risk. But I do think in telling the story, our chances of a successful levy lift, I said it a couple of times, it can be a tongue twister. But yeah, so anyway, with that said.
Look, I clearly have heard from council that the levy lift lid needs to happen. I think really it's the February that is the only challenge that, that I see from a staffing point of view to make sure we, we get it going. Because that's a, I think, an 18 December, if I'm, to get it kind of in one sock where we're, we still have some questions about is six the right number. And, and then on the, on the police side, we have some, a few more questions to sort out. But anyway, that's, that's at least from the, this side of the, the government. But I, but I also hear from council loudly that, you know, we have to tie that in, like make a promise to the community, to our public safety, that regardless of the 2023 budget, we're going to make a commitment to do the levy lift lid. I think that's what I'm hearing. Is that right? You're chomping at the bit to hit the button. Okay, Ms. Cleland, okay. Okay, no, no, that's it.
Mayor Miller.
Hi.
Please.
Do you want to go ducks?
Oh.
Oh, yes.
I just want to say I'm in agreement with Mr. Young in that this is a risk, but, you know, I'm, I'm behind the risk. It gets people out on the street now. And that the levy list is needed, but trying to rush it within the next four weeks, you know, just kind of take a little bit more time, make sure we have all of our ducks in the row, we have it correct, and we have that time that Mr. Young was saying, that we can explain the story, put, put meaning behind why we need it. I mean, April, August, just a little bit more time versus trying to use all these hours of manpower that it takes to put it together in the next four weeks when we're also focusing on everything else, just gives us a little bit more time to actually focus on what is actually needed, so we can present that to the public in the correct manner, versus saying, oh, we should have added this, or now, next year, we have to come forward again and do it again. Taking that time, show that we did our due diligence and did it correctly the first time.
And again, if Mr. Walters, and I believe he is correct, a one-time levy lift, that, that definitely frees things up to the February, April. So, you know, April seems like could be a reasonable target that I think the staff would be able to pull off. All right, Ms. Cleland, sorry. But thank you for recognizing that we, I'm trying to do a better job letting other council members speak, but thank you for helping me.
Yeah. I guess we're getting, to me, we're getting in the weeds. My first question is, I mean, does council feel like this is necessary? And I don't know if we've really discussed the reasons it's necessary enough at a general council meeting. So I think that that's kind of step number one, that I don't actually think will take that long to discuss, because I think it's fairly obvious. We received a letter from the Anacor's Professional Firefighters and the Anacor's Police Services Guild on October 24th. It went to Mayor Miller, it went to all of council. It talked about, I think it's available for the public to see it, that our staffing has remained flat. We have had multiple plans and comp plans and forget what the number is, 1984, 81986?
Resolution.
That has said that our staffing is, our staffing is low, it needs to increase. We also got a memorandum from Mr. Miller, kind of discussing more in depth of what his work with the different groups, of what is necessary. Us on plan, us on our Public Safety Committee have sat both with kind of with some union, got, union representation and also with, with chiefs. And it seems like there's not a lot of debate when it comes to what's needed. You know, it was proposed for police officers You know, it was proposed for police officers, we sat there with Chief Floyd, we sat there with one of his, one of his counterparts that does a lot of scheduling, sounded like that for the four additional officers, if we're at full staffing, would allow to make some major changes, which would make this department even more appealing. So to me, that, that, that's kind of pretty straightforward. It would also be more appealing to do 10 fours for lateral, lateral movement from other departments, which makes getting them actually on the ground and in the car a lot faster. One thing that I think we should discuss is that currently, each police officer has their own car, that they have kind of 24/7. If we continue with that model, that would mean that we've got, I think, two or three cars available for the four empty posi, for current vacant positions, but we would need to address those four additional cars for the new four additional positions. So that's something I think we should talk about. And then, and then it comes to fire. We talked about it somewhat, you know, they've got to go to some training and then get their gear. There was some fancy word you guys used that I didn't, what is the word? Shatnot? Huh?
No.
Gear, oh, anyway, they all have to have two of them.
Bunker, bunker gear.
Bunker gear. Okay. So that means it's about $20,000 per position, right? You have two position, or you have training for two budgeted into your budget every year. I mean, these are, like, I think we should be talking about this, quickly get it done. I don't really see what, how complicated it is. You know, we discussed in public safety, do we want, would we want to add Station Three to this lid lift potentially? Seemed like from my listening to consensus, that that was not something we wanted to do. We really want to focus on the fact that it's the service, it's the people who provide service to our community, and so we wanted to keep it very clear that this is for, you know, fire and police that come respond to your door. It is not about building beautiful buildings. And I think that that is important to me, and I, it seemed important to the rest of, you know, it, it was a common feeling that that was what needed to be done. I, and I, I hear Mr. Miller say that, you know, February is too soon, or it's, it's too fast, and I'm, I'm not even saying February, maybe it is April, but I, I still am not getting enough information of, can I get a punch list of the scope of work that is necessary? What are we lacking, and how long is it going to take to get that information, regardless of whatever we put it on? I mean, if we know the staffing numbers and we kind of understand how much it takes to outfit those new positions, I'm just, I'm having a hard time not feeling like we're trying to kick it down the road. And I think we've heard from the public, we've heard from our amazing fire and police that this is important. We all seem to say it's important. So I just, I'm having a real hard time understanding why that, that, that's, there's this, like, the disconnect of, gosh, we, we just can't deal with it right now. So if you have, I mean, I don't know what your, the scope of work for you to gather it with Mr. Hoagland, with HR or what, but I just, I need something to understand kind of what's necessary to get to the next step, to determine how much time we need.
I can speak to, sorry, to fire, it, it really comes down, as I kind of mentioned in the meeting earlier today, it comes down to, if we've made the decision that we're going to staff an additional engine, so to put four people at Station One, that's, that's the, that's the overall goal here with, of the levy lid lift. To get to, based on the math, I went back after the meeting, did a little bit of rough math, and to, to keep eight people on duty with limited overtime would take, or virtually no overtime, would take seven new FTEs, which would be shifts of 10 with two floaters. It'll tell you, as the fire chief, having floaters is, it's difficult for training and for accountability. It would be my preference if we were going to make that leap to add one more to eight, to give three shifts of, of 11, which just cleans things up. It could be done, and then also now, we have to make that decision, if overtime isn't an issue, then we can keep that at the six, still maintain eight, just understanding there'd be some overtime built into that. And that calculation I have not done yet.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
Well, I, I think Ms. Cleveland McGrath said it fairly well. I, I do want to say it is impressive when both police and fire come to us and say we're hurting. I, I do take well the point, you know, that there will be one-time costs associated with staffing up, the cars, the gear, the training. I, I would not really support rolling in those costs into the levy lid lift, because you don't, you don't get the full amount of those costs right away. You need to, you know, amortize them in, and instead, we should probably fund those one-time expenses out of reserves. And if we, if we do six firefighters and four police, my math is it's 1.4, 1.5 million dollars, and that's 10% of general revenues. And that's why we're talking about a levy lid lift, because it's just not possible to squeeze the budget and get that additional money out of it without making substantial cuts to other programs, departments, other things that we do, we want, and our constituents want. So that is one of the reasons, you know, that we are talking about a levy lid lift at all. Now, if we do seven or eight firefighters, maybe we can reduce overtime, and I think that's attractive, because it improves quality of life. Nobody likes to pay overtime. And if it total, in total, if it brings down the cost, I'd be supportive of that. But it's also another six cents on the levy lid lift. So do we save enough to cut that additional cost? And, and then you, you don't always know 100% for sure that you're going to eliminate overtime, because people go out on sick, or, or we lose people to other departments and those kinds of things. But I'd be supportive of looking at that. But I think to Ms. Cleveland McGrath's point again, these are also not particularly complicated calculations. I mean, I, I can, I can help with drafting the resolution. I, I think that we could get it done in a month. I also am not opposed to looking at the April ballot. But that gets you maybe two more months before you got to put a resolution in front of the auditor's office to put it on that ballot. So either way is, is fine by me. I think sooner is better. We're engaging in the conversations now at a pretty good clip, and I think that that's been useful to try to figure out exactly how it is and what it is we want to do here. But, you know, I, I think that we can, in fact, answer these questions fairly quickly.
Mayor Miller.
Just to, because a lot of the discussion is about capability of the staff to get this done in a rapid manner. You know, I'm, I'm tasked by you all and the citizens to run the staff. I've got a pretty good idea of the capacity there. I think the little bit of breathing room to April, I think we could, we could row pretty hard and, and, and make it happen, happen then. Just understanding there is other stuff that, that goes on. I know it's really important, I know this is a really important, public safety is the most important thing we do, but it's not the only thing we do as a city. And, you know, having that breathing room to try to, to put this all together, even though I know, Mr. Walters, you've looked at the numbers in detail, a lot of other folks have, three weeks to get a, you know, pro and con, and get it over to the, get it over to the county elections office. Based on my working with the staff for a year, not that they couldn't do it, it's, it, there would be some sacrifices there. Mr. Young, sorry.
Yeah. Personally, and I'm one member of council, I think that the budget that the mayor's put forward is conservative. I think it attempts to conserve funds, and looking at 2023 and the uncertainty of where we are, what does it mean for fiber, and that fiber is also part of the investment that we are making within our region to try to also attract, you know, businesses and just the, all the support services that are online. So that, that's an investment. And so if, to Ms. Cleveland McGrath's point about feeling comfortable and needing some additional numbers, you know, so I'm, I think that we're really not far apart in our viewpoint. Ms. Cleveland McGrath is saying that she wants to feel comfortable with a, a greater delineation of where those funds and how they're going to be used, and, you know, all the auxiliary things that are necessary when we start talking about two people, given the model that we have of individual cars, what does that mean? And I think that once we have that, I think, you know, we all would feel just a little bit better. So the question I have, given that I think that this is a good budget and a good proposal, unless I'm hearing something else, the question is, do we have to take action tonight on this, or can we see if we can get closer to the answers of what Ms. Cleveland McGrath is asking for, at least in some additional numbers, and that would make us all very clear about what we're really talking about, given the model we've used for business and doing what we do? Okay, all right. Thank you.
And, and I think the, the next action is, is a resolution that lays out the question is, you know, how many, what details do we, and we talked about this in the public safety committee, what details do we have to have in the, the resolution to, to get, to get it moving forward? But I, I would kind of like to get back to the 2023 budget, because I do have a real timeline to, to have that done. And we spent a lot of time talking about these, I guess what I'm, I'm looking for is, in the meantime, I'll get back to the original question, and in the meantime, does this tourniquet band-aid make sense? My staff believes it does make sense. Mr. McDougal.
Very quick question. So the, the tourniquet bandage, the two folks, basically, these are two of the future six or future eight, just to be entirely clear?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, so we're, and we're looking at essentially a temporary funding for them until such time as, you know, ideally levy passes, funds come in in mid-2024. To have the two hired, like, were you, like, could they be hired, like, early in the year?
Yeah, right, as soon as they're authorized.
Okay. So it's, it's not like the best case they get hired in July, and actually, we're only paying for half a year?
No, and I'd let Chief Harris, you know, talk about the training timeline. I mean, we, we get lucky sometimes, and we, because we were down, we had five vacancies in the fire department in the spring, and, you know, we had some laterals and some, sorry, the other word, I'll let you talk.
Yeah, so currently, we have a valid lateral EMT list. And frankly, one of the upsides to this is we have some star candidates on that list that I'd like to scoop up before someone else does. So that's, that's another upside to this particular proposal. So yeah, we're assuming that the budget gets approved in the next few weeks, we get to start to put the job offers out and potentially have them working on January 1st or thereabouts.
Okay, great. I mean, I, you know, I think I'm comfortable with it, so.
I'm going to add, Ms. Hubig, because, please.
Thank you. We've talked about this a lot over the last week in all of the public safety meetings that we've been a part of. I am 100% supportive of taking the temporary funds to get more superstars on this island. We have promised to take care of the people that live and work here, and we've promised to take care of the residents that need these services. And yeah, we've used phrases like Band-Aids and tourniquets, and, you know, making it very clear that this is temporary to get us to where we need to be. And setting aside money as an intent to run a levy next year is also appropriate, you know, when we've got non-binding resolutions that have come before us, and then we're referring to them six years later. A budget line item is a little bit more than something that's non-binding, and it's just words on a paper. So I'm, I'm fully supportive of it.
By the way, thank you for using that term "non-binding," because I think that's what the, the uncomfort level is with a lot of council members, is that, yeah, we said we were going to do this, but, and so I understand how we need to tie, where we're going tying this into the budget.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
There, I, I've articulated my discomfort with spending one-time funds on ongoing expenses, but also, I don't want us to get into a situation where, if we're talking about the levy lid lift, because if it were a choice, you know, two firefighters is not making the difference versus the six or more that we would achieve with the levy lid lift, I don't want us to get into a situation where we don't have money available for the four $70,000 police cars that we need for the four new police officers, or the firefighter gear, or the firefighter training. And then I also think about the fact that, you know, we do have a ladder truck coming that we are going to need to pay for, and these funds could be used toward that. I think it probably still makes sense to get low-interest loans for the ladder truck, because that preserves our cash on hand. But otherwise, there are opportunity costs to spending this money on, on ongoing expenses. And my strong preference still is to make this decision after we pass a levy lid lift, so that we could decide, you know, in April or February, whenever we're running such a, a measure on the ballot, and it passes, then we could decide to fund people on an ongoing basis, rather than saying, yeah, we're going to fund you for two years, and after two years, we don't have a funding source associated with you.
Mayor Miller.
And Ms. Hubig.
Could, and question for staff really, could this be something when y'all are pulling together numbers for what it looks like to bring in the equipment, the cars, the ladders, the uniforms, the outfits, stuff like that? If we're talking about 2023, and we're looking ahead a couple of years already, this should be something that's brought to the public safety committees quarterly, where we look at, you know, what expenses are going to be, so that when we have this conversation this time next year, we're not fighting over what '25 is going to look like, because we've already been talking about what our budgets are going to look like going forward.
Yes, it's an excellent point, and, and it's a good reminder to talk about the other number in the budget, the $2.3 million in negotiated wages and benefit increases that's in the budget, that, that still remains unaddressed as a ongoing future expense. But I want to address something that Mr. Walters said, because the two FTEs, it's not an insignificant impact to the operations of the fire department. And maybe because we haven't had this public discussion, this has been a lot of, maybe a lot of staff internally, and then a little bit of the public safety, we haven't really had that, because again, you've made a convincing argument, to me certainly, that two FTEs now will have a significant operational impact on the fire department. Maybe you can say a couple of words about that.
Yeah, certainly. Yeah, so changing from six a day to seven a day is significant. Now, obviously, the eight a day with an engine is, is, is better still, but in the short term, the seven, it allows that third person to, on minor calls, the captain responds behind the ambulance and the SUV, you still have three people on scene. On a fire, he gets in the engine, you still, you have three people geared up and ready to fight fire or make a rescue right now. But the, the biggest difference between what we're doing today and what that does is it allows that third person to be flexible and to break away. And if the second call comes in, and the closest unit is out in Marches Point, they can still make that first contact. And if they have CPR, worst case, they can do chest compressions and have a defibrillator until the ambulance can get there. Any other calls, they can start medical care, do those things. So again, it's not ideal, but it is significantly better. Right now, in that same situation, if all of our units were out, and we had a significant medical emergency downtown, nobody gets there for 10 to 12 minutes, depending on closest. This case, they can break away and get there, and hopefully back in the three and four-minute timeframe that we're looking for. It just allow, it all, I mean, on non-emergency operations, it also allows us, currently, we have to routinely bring, our slowest engine is out at Station Two in Skyline. So to train, they frequently have to, or when we're doing details downtown, inspections, public education, we have to bring them in, and we're leaving the Skyline area unprotected for whatever timeframe that is. Having that flexibility, having that third person at Station One, the captain or whoever can go out to say Station Two to provide training, or to provide, you know, additional resources, or can do the inspections while leaving all the units in quarters. It creates more flexibility, and it allows us to respond to more calls with at least somebody, even if it's not a complete company.
Thank you.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
This is a really interesting discussion, and I'm learning a lot. It's also a very big decision that I don't feel that we ordinarily make as a council, like we're presented an idea and we say, sure. I mean, we do the head nodding periodically. So what I would like to do, we also have some other budget considerations that we need to talk about, which I would love to do as well, and then sort of mull these things over and bring them back next week. But if, if, I would love to move on to some of those other things that we've, we've talked about.
Wow. Thank, thank you for helping me move a meeting along. I'm usually that guy, so appreciate that, Ms. Moulton. All right. So yeah, a lot to mull over for that one. So again, talking about budget, the, the areas of FTEs, at least, you know, when I was on council, that's council, that's what I like to talk about because those are usually the exciting things to talk about. And they're the, as I say in government, they're the gift that keeps on giving, i.e. that's the cost that keeps on, is there, and that's the reality, and that's fine. So do you have the next FTE up? The .5 FTE parking enforcement to assist Officer Naibo and pay, and again, if I'm looking to hire, you know, I'm always looking for the, as Mr. Hoagland knows, for the, you know, how do we pay for it? And the idea was this is covered with the increase of the 1% property tax. So I don't know if you, I don't know if you had anything like this for the, but I know Chief Floyd has been nice enough to be standing by online for any questions there.
Yeah, so I don't have anything regarding that position or the other position that was budgeted in the storm drain fund, so these are just the additional things that we had talked about, so.
So if anybody wants to ask Chief Floyd about the halftime parking enforcement, I know it's come before council before, but again, we're trying to answer all of your questions. He's nice enough to dial in from a conference that he's out on.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
Well, so I have a comment on the storm drain position, I think.
Okay, so before you do that, sorry, can we make sure there aren't any comments on the halftime FTE for law enforcement?
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Moulton?
Thanks. I just wanted to ask, and thank you for being here, Chief Floyd, if the parking enforcement, if there is any overlap with the planning department and some of the code enforcement for things like drug houses, for example, is there overlap there? Or the, and the parking enforcement, I know Officer Naibo is super busy, I don't know if we're talking that this is going to help the issue on T Avenue specifically or a more general. I'd just like, like, Chief Floyd, if you could, an overview of how this is going to help you, and if this could be shared with planning. Thanks.
All right, Chief, you're on.
Good evening. So this position would be overall reinforcing parking throughout the city, a significant part of their time would likely be on T Avenue and dealing with some of those issues that the transients do generate on T Avenue, but this is a general citywide parking enforcement position. As I mentioned previously, Officer Naibo is splitting her time between parking enforcement, animal control, and code enforcement. And we are definitely not getting the 20 hours a week dedicated to parking enforcement now that this position would allow. The advantage is allowing this person to be solely dedicated on parking enforcement, and we receive complaints citywide, not just from the areas where the transients have congregated. So allowing the flexibility for that person to address the issues that are raised, and in a more timely manner, is what this position allows us to do.
So does that involve, like, tickets mainly, or, because I'm wondering about the efficacy of tickets given to, you know, people who are parked long-term in places that we would rather they didn't?
I'm not understanding your question.
Okay, so is parking enforcement really working on T Avenue?
That's a different set of circumstances that we're dealing with there, because some of those individuals are residing in the motorhomes. As I just mentioned, this position is citywide, so not just T Avenue. There's plenty more parking issues that we receive throughout the city. A good example is at the park next to Glimis Ferry Terminal, or Washington Park is another busy location for us. So T Avenue would be one section of the city that they would need to focus on. And as I've mentioned previously, you know, the goal there is for those individuals to be moving every 72 hours, so they can't accumulate the large piles of trash, and they're not specifically affecting one or two businesses that they've parked in front of permanently. And having someone that has got the time to dedicate to that would hopefully make the enforcement more effective than it has been currently.
And I'll add on to that, parking enforcement on T Avenue has reduced the number of vehicles on T Avenue. Because that's the few, the one few tools we have in our toolbox to do enforcement, because they result in toes ultimately.
And also, Ms. Moulton, to your question about the planning department, so I think I mentioned in a previous meeting, it was brought to my attention that the position must be funded out of the police department budget for them to be able to have access to the state patrol's database, which would be essential for their job function to issue those infractions to the vehicle owner.
Okay, that's very helpful. Thank you.
And needless to say, I've got a lot more stuff on that about various houses that we're doing enforcement on, and junk vehicles, that kind of thing, so. All right, any other questions for the chief while we have him for the halftime parking enforcement? Mr. Young?
Just to follow up on, I think it was a question that was asked at one of the prior council meetings, but Ms. Moulton broached it again about the code enforcement with the public work, I mean, the planning department. Short term, it's kicking in a little bit with everything happening at home. But it was two different points that we were making. One about code enforcement and under Mr. Measor's department, and then the other part was this FTE, and I thought your question, Ms. Moulton, had also dealt with the symbiotic or collaborative relationship between those two things, and was there any overlap, I think was what you referenced early on.
And just to help you out, we were talking about, I cut Mr. Walters off because we wanted to let Chief talk about the uniformed, the uniform non-commission parking enforcement piece, and then next up will be the halftime storm and code enforcement with that. I like, I also use the word synergy, but are there questions about our halftime parking enforcement?
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
Well, so I tend to think that we need some additional code enforcement citywide, not specifically parking, but also parking. We feel parking complaints, especially downtown, on a regular basis. People complaining that there isn't enough parking downtown, and what little is available is consumed by merchants or their employees in violation of the four-hour limit for parking in the CBD. So that's a type of enforce, of code enforcement that we need done, but there are also land use code violations, there's drug house issues, there are also people who have houses that are falling into the ground, you know, those are not police code enforcement, they are civil code enforcement matters that our code puts under the planning director to take care of. And our code provides for the planning director to be able to issue tickets for those types of violations. We've never implemented that structure. And if we're adding resources to code enforcement, I think we do have an opportunity to add those resources to the planning department rather than the police department. Although I also take the point that Zabrina in the police department is, I guess, well-known as one of the busiest members of the police department and certainly can use the resources as well, which is why I propose, you know, shifting some of those responsibilities around to relieve some of the pressure while achieving more code enforcement generally where our priorities are. But if we're not going to do that, then fine, you know, give that .5 FTE to the police department, but the police department isn't going to be doing anything other than parking and those criminal law violations. So we might be losing out on an opportunity to achieve more code enforcement generally. Now, the next position that we were going to talk about.
Wait, before you get off of that, though, I want to just make sure, because the complaints I get about drug houses, we do send the uniform person, because a lot of times, there's vehicles that, that uniform non-commission officer is the only one that's able to get in the system and look up the status of those vehicles that are a big part of, a big part of the drug houses, and I guess we're going, we'll go ahead and use that term, people know what we're talking about, a big part of that is cleaning up vehicles that are abandoning those. So again, appreciate the thought, and can we let the chief go, and then we can talk about the other teams?
All right, I wonder if you might, let me ask one clarifying question about the storm position. So I understand that the stormwater position is part-time stormwater permit work and part-time stormwater code enforcement as a result of our new stormwater permit requirements. So do I have those understood correctly?
Yeah, and Mr. Hash has already got himself lined up, but it's a full-time person working that great synergy that already exists in the office between Mr. Measmer's planning department and Mr. Hash's public works department that already do inspections together in a lot of situations to include violations, and then I'll stop talking, but it is one person, halftime storm, halftime code enforcement. And that's the halftime because, for budgeting purposes, because again, I don't want to present a budget to the public or to council that doesn't have a means to pay for it. And the means to pay for it in this case are, the code enforcement side of it comes from restricted general funds that are restricted in permit fees, and the storm portion comes from our stormwater utility rates. So, all right, I'll stop talking, Mr. Hash, bail me out.
You had it correctly, Mayor. Good evening, Henry Hash, Public Works. Good to see you all in here. Councilman Young, nice to have you back. As Mayor stated, this is really one full-time position made of two halves. We are really excited to work with planning and community development. We do that all the time, every minute, every day. Anyway, we are a small city, smaller department, we need to help each other. So as of 1/123, we have new mandate coming up called Source Control Program. We must do that, we have no choice. The requirements of municipal stormwater permits, source control involves working with all the existing businesses and talking to them about stormwater practices, like dumpster maintenance and many things of similar nature. We currently do not have a staffing to cover this, since this mandate is coming as a 1/123, and we must comply. So either hire someone half-time at this point, which we're going to see how we can work it out within the next year or so, and if it's not enough, we come back to you, but we feel good about it. The other option is to contract out with consultants, which would be considerably, considerably more money. This is half. And since my colleague Don isn't here, I'm going to talk about his half. And that's the 50%, stormwater site plan review. Currently, one type of site plan review is done by the building department. One type is done by engineering, and another type is done by the consultant. We are not always consistent and is not always to the best interests of the city. Having one person, half a person dedicated to site plan review will provide consistency, and a dedicated staff member that will also be available at counter, fraud counter, to serve the public. These are the reasons for these two.
Thank you. And again, the 50/50 is really for funding purposes. That doesn't mean if we have more, you know, we have 80% more storm requirement or 20, you know, that's, that's the great thing about the two departments, how well they work together. So it could be 80/20, it could be, you know, 50/50. But I have, we lay out our FTEs based on how we're funding them. All right, questions for Mr. Hash? Mr. Walters?
So my question in all of that is, I understand, from what I previously understood and what you have just described, is this is a very stormwater-focused person. They're not going to be doing general code enforcement work.
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Any other ques, any other questions, Mr. Hash? All right. All right, where did Mr. Hoagland go? He's probably sitting down where I can't see him. So, all right, we're still, we're still on, oh, so this is a public hearing, and there's still some hardy members of the public that are standing by to engage with the council on the 2023 budget? Give you an opportunity to come up? All right, council, again, there's some, you know, as much as Mr. Hoagland can dream about getting a budget approved tonight, we will look to bring this back next week with any more of your inputs. Or if we think there's enough, maybe disagreement on some of these, I could do a, I could take a poll.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
Well, so I had proposed a couple of changes, one of which was pursuing the levy lid-lift. Another one was the utility discount program enhancements, which don't necessarily, because we need to craft those, they don't necessarily need to result in an amendment to the proposed budget. One was shifting that parking FTE to the planning department. And then there were two others, and so one of them was the, the fact that we currently contract with a firm for prosecution services. And I did some of the math on this, and I think that we are thinking, we would be looking at an $18,000 plus-up to switch from a contract position to an FTE. And we have court several days a month, but with an FTE, we would have them in the office 40 hours a week, for the difference of, by my math, $18,000. And that's based on what a civil deputy prosecuting attorney at Skagit County is currently advertised for at the high end of the range for starting salary, and a civil deputy, so paid a little bit more than a criminal deputy. I think that also, if we hired somebody internally, we could back up the city attorney. So when the city attorney gets hit by a bus, we've still got institutional knowledge internally. And frankly, we should be thinking about that in stormwater, too. You know, we're going to be hiring somebody for some pretty specific tasks in stormwater, but we need to be backing up the stormwater permit person. But, so that just really strikes me as a no-brainer. We are talking about needing some more support for the police department for the legislative changes that have come down from the legislature. It's probably something that has been a long time needed, and it's, would be beneficial to us because it would help relieve the city attorney's office as well, because a person hired into this position needn't be exclusively a criminal prosecutor. Again, we're only meeting in court a few days a month, so they could be assisting us with all the other things that the city attorney's office is doing. So I would invite discussion on that at this point.
Okay, I'll kick it off with my general, the reason that we didn't, that we've looked at this issue before, and much like, there was some other proposals from staff to replace contractors with FTE, and the reason I didn't present in this fairly conservative budget is my experience in government. And yes, the numbers usually work out, maybe the first year when you hire somebody to replace that contract worker, but after a while, well, they need an assistant, and oh, they need, you know, a new pay raise, and back to that $2.3 million of wage and benefit increases, that other intangible that I know, Mr. Walters, you and I have both said on council many times, is that really sustainable? And it's not sustainable when you continue to hire full-time employees. But that's my little soapbox on not presenting all of the full-time positions where you could, I could probably find two, two other positions where you could do the initial math where it's, it's less expensive initially to hire a FTE versus some of the contractors. But I'll let Ms. Swetnum jump in, and as our legal expert on the team.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor, thank you, council. Yeah, Mr. Walters, in response to that suggestion, I would rather win the Lotto than get hit by a bus, by the way, but, but I appreciate the idea of building redundancy into the, into the legal department, I think that's important. I did a little bit of digging into the numbers, I talked with Riley Nguyen. in the HR department about what we would be looking at, and so, the way that it's structured right now, we contract with both Julie Walters and Craig Kamik, and we have a full-time legal assistant who supports their workload. We pay a monthly fixed amount for prosecution plus services, so they're there for the court days. They're also available, you know, for meetings outside of those court days to move cases forward, and those are, those are both criminal matters, and also things like dangerous dogs, and some additional time to advise the police department on related issues. So that portion of the contract for this next year, what we would be looking at is about $80,000, and then, starting in 2022, we built in an additional $15,000 into that contract for support for the police department. You know, I kind of have been touching bases with Chief Floyd quite a bit about how that's working, and I can say that I believe that it's been working pretty well, the way we've got it structured. I have had a lot more conversation with, with Ms. Walters and with Craig Kamik about, about police-related issues. So the total for the contract, I estimate to be about $95,000. When I talk with Riley about an FTE with benefits, the range was about 137 at the low end to 171, and that was based on where we have our public defender. So we've, we've figured the delta is somewhere between 40,000 and 100,000. You know, my, my only concern about making that transition right now is that we have a relatively new police chief, and there are some other big, there are some other big projects coming up in the next year, like moving our court system over into Laserfish, and that, that would, those are really the reasons that went into me not asking for that change to happen in this upcoming budget. I think eventually, that's certainly the direction that the department's going to need to go, and I'm happy to dig into any more of those pieces of information if council finds that helpful.
I definitely, you know, it's worth, it's worth discussing and continue to see what works best. I've also been able to have complete access to the prosecutor specialties, we're trying to work through some of these law enforcement challenges. Any other questions?
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
I would love to see via email the basis for those total cost of compensation figures.
I'm happy to email those out to council.
Fair enough.
Because I think the likely closest comp is probably City Mount Vernon, Assistant City Attorney, and they recently had a position open. Don't recall what the salary is, but I'm, I don't think it was 170 less benefits, but, so let's, let's take a look at that. My final suggestion was that we fund community action to open an office here in Anacortes, because we need support for people to stay in their homes, and we, it's great if we can catch people after they become homeless, it's infinitely harder to catch people after they become homeless. It's much easier to help people stay in their homes, and so, community action offers support for that. Our other nonprofits here in Anacortes offer that support, too, but community action provides some things that others don't, including energy utility assistance. They would be offered rent in the Housing Authority buildings, because community action also provides services to the Housing Authority residents, some of whom could not live in the housing, they couldn't function in the Housing Authority housing without services that community action connects them to. So I think that, as, I mean, we've talked about community action over many years, and it would be a real benefit to Anacortes. We are almost certainly entering into a period of more substantial economic uncertainty and downturn in some ways, or costs and others, and providing more services to people near-term, and especially with a proven entity like community action, I think would provide a lot of benefit to people. Just, just taking one data point, the Housing Authority houses something like 375 people in town, and that's in addition to the people that are also housed by the family center, and that receive other services. Some of, some of the people that the Housing Authority houses pay very little in rent, and that's the potential homelessness problem that we could have if not for that service. And so, keeping people in their houses, to the extent that community action can do that, is money that I think would be really, really well-spent. Mayor Miller?
Mr. Young?
As I've said earlier, I personally believe that this budget is a good budget. Yes, there are things that we want to look at to see what we would add, modify, change, you know, just those things as a legislative side that we're willing to do. I get that. In this case, though, I am, personally, I'm a fan of community action. I served on their board when I first moved to Anacortes, and the thing about community action that I will agree with Mr. Walters on this piece is that the needs that we're all seeing, the things that we're complaining about, T Avenue, the homelessness, all of the services, mental health, all of those things, what's clear across the country is that we do not have enough resources, maybe even it's staff and team to try to begin to address some of these things. But even if we didn't look at this particular addition to the budget of 50,000, which is not a lot of money, if we were to already look at the costs associated with treating and pickups, and working with these, with various people that are in need, that costs far exceeds what we're asking here, because we're really already paying it. You know, whether it's the jail time that's associated with people that may be arrested for one thing or another, or whether it's the services of sending police out, or trying to get help for people that are in need, this is an investment in helping Skagit County as a whole run. Community action has done a stellar job across the communities, and it works intently here in Anacortes. I think at their proposal date was 500 and something people I saw on the list that they were already treating. But my issue is that, when we look at the costs as, you know, B-school, I love B-school, I love those ancillary costs, we can look at one side of it, but when we look at what we're really already paying, what we are really, as a society, already suffering through, the costs truly associated with that, and $50,000 is not a lot of money, particularly when you look in the faces of the people that are at need right now. I think that's an investment forward, that's something personally I'm willing to do, and I think that in the collection of what we're building here, housing, affordable housing, being bold enough to do that, the family center, the Housing Authority, I think that it gives people hope, and I think that the hole that's truly missing, that we may not fully realize, it is community actions having a presence on the island, because that presence here on the island truly does matter. And they have a lot of staff that would live and work here in Anacortes, so.
Thank you. Mr. Hoagland, can you remind us what is currently budgeted for community action, what we've typically done, and CDBG opportunities as well for community action?
Right, so there is $10,000 budgeted to support Skagit County Community Action, that's, that 10,000 has been in the budget for, for a long time, the, and again, is in the 2023 budget. The CDBG funding, I think there could be some potential opportunities to use that grant funding to help out with some of these, some of these things. I would be happy to try and get more information and bring back about opportunities for the CDBG grant.
Yeah, and I've got a meeting with community action, I think in the next week or so, anyway, to learn, learn some more about this, but, so we're, really, for budget purposes, we're talking about a $40,000 delta, and also, again, my biggest question was, you know, when we, before this body, many times, we talked about funding with CDBG as well, but we could probably, we can see what might work. Mr. Walters?
It's actually a 50K delta, because it's 60K that they would need to staff an office here, so the 10K that we've currently budgeted, and we have budgeted for several years, when we've executed contracts with them, they have been like one-line scope of work, basically, here's $10,000. We should never do that with any entity, ever, and is not with this one, either. You know, our contract should instead say, you will provide these services, staffed out of a physical office in Anacortes. But still, we're talking a 50K delta from what's currently in the budget document. The CDBG funds, I think, are rather limited, because you're only allowed, under the CDBG rules, something like 10% of those funds to be budgeted for services. We used to fund community action, I think, to the extent of 10% of the CDBG money, but we transferred that to the family center, and then we supplemented community action with 10K of general revenue. But if we continue giving those services money to the family center, there wouldn't be any more available out of the CDBG fund because of that 10% limit. So I don't think that that's a place where we can get money.
Ms. Moulton?
Thank you. I share Mr. Walters' concerns about the CDBG grant, because it is so tightly restricted, and I think we only get $150,000 a year, roughly. So anyway, that's, that's something to follow up on with Ms. Stewart, probably, too, in planning. Mr. Young brought up a lot of really good points. One of the strongest, among many strong points, is the cost that we don't see, that we pay when people lose their homes, that we all pay, not just those people, but our, our community as a whole. And as I said last week, I think that this investment, for me, is a no-brainer, I fully support it. They are the administrators of the National Low Income Energy Assistance Program, they're the only ones in Skagit County that do that, and there's just a lot of opportunity for synergy with the city and our program, and the other organizations in town that they're already working with, and I feel like $60,000 for that kind of coverage and that kind of aid for our people is, is invaluable. So I fully support that budget change.
Ms. Hubick, is, did you push the button?
I did.
Okay, you're on.
To echo Carolyn's, or, sorry, Ms. Moulton's sentiments, the other thing that having community action in our community does, is that it helps us to expand our audience. I know that a lot of times here, we sometimes feel like Anacortes is isolated, and people don't hear our stories, and we live in a very niche neighborhood, when you've got somebody that sees all of Skagit County, including Anacortes, to help fight for us at a county level, at a state level, the community action organizations have an incredible statewide presence, and we see it at the legislature. If we can, you know, find a little bit of money to pay for a little bit of a stronger voice, I think that that could help. What's the version? It's a rising tide that lifts all ships, I think it would be fantastic.
I got a majority of the council here, so.
Got it.
Understood. No, we got it. All right, anything else for the budget ordinance that you want to relay to staff? Mr. Walters?
I had requested previously a description of how much money we are spending on our pavement management program this year and next year, and then projection of REIT expenses. Do we have those materials?
Yes, thank you for the, for the reminder, Mr. Walters. As far as history of the pavement management, I don't think I have that specifically. I did put together a quick spreadsheet showing the use, current use of REIT, and projected REIT and REIT use and balances based on current activities and the CFP. So this has a few years of history here, REIT I and REIT II, the amount we've spent each year over the last several years. 2022, this is what our, sorry, if you drop down here, this is what our, what our actual cash flows look like. So at the end of September, we had a total of 3.9 million in cash, combined REIT I and REIT II. Based on what we collected last year, the last few months of the year, we would collect an additional 400,000. We're anticipating to spend about 1.4 million, so we are projecting at this point to end the year, all things being equal, nearly $3 million. And you can see this ending balance transfers over to the beginning balance, this next section, with the years highlighted in green, we, in our CFP, are projecting to use 1.7 million in REIT in 2023. If we bring in an additional 1.2 million, so these are the metrics I used as an estimate of revenues, 80% in 2023 of what we are projecting to collect in 2022, 2024 would be an equivalent amount of revenue, and then the subsequent years would increase by 8% per year over the prior year. So that puts us at these ending balances. So beginning balance, 2.9, spending, 1.7, collecting, 1.2, and ending at 2.4. And then you can follow that projection out through the end of the six-year planning cycle. So you see the one year in 2027 dips below zero slightly at 40,000, coming back up in 2028 at 212,000, and I would point out that these numbers will change. These are, I was going to say, as Mr. Buckenmeyer used to like to say, I guarantee these won't be the numbers you'll see in those future years. And there are a number of things that we budget, we adjust our budgets on as we move through year to year, and we'll make adjustments to this, so we wouldn't end up in a negative position. And this is, you know, five years out into the planning horizon, so plenty of time to make adjustments between now and then.
Okay, so, thank you for that. Can you send that to us so that we can digest it?
Yeah.
Along with that description of pavement management spend?
Yep, I think we can, and so, we're not going to get any credit for the over 1.8 million dollars for pavement management. Sorry, I, okay, well, it's going to be 2.2 or 2.3 million dollars, and because I directed the staff, we're not going to go to council with a less than the council-directed pavement management spend, so, but we'll get you the details of the plan, but it's more than 1.8 million dollars. All right, anything else for Mr. Hoagland?
Mr. Mayor, if I, if I may, I did, I did want to try and clarify this, this issue of the two FTE. So I heard a couple council members supported this idea. Mr. Walters suggested perhaps a mid-year budget amendment might be appropriate once we know the outcome of a levy lid lift. I guess I would just like a little, kind of more firm direction on what to bring back as far as this goes next, for next week.
So I think I had a majority of the council that wants to be able to put firefighters on the line on January 1st. I see one heading, two, three, maybe, four. Ms. Moulton?
Thank you. I am not opposed. I am not decided I want another week to mull it over, is what I said.
Yeah, that's fair. Ms. Cleland?
I know our, the next meeting is packed, quite, quite full. I guess, I'm not opposed to it. I just, it makes me concerned to do this and kind of kick the can down the road. So that's all I say about it. And I guess my final takeaway is, is there a way that maybe the police chief and the fire chief could, could do kind of, doesn't have to be a long and huge presentation, but at least a quick presentation, couple minutes, explaining, you know, to not only council, but the general public, how those, the potential lid lift, whether but the general public, how those, the potential lid lift, whether it's four for police and six to eight for fire, how that, what that looks like. I know that it's getting, you know, it'll be the following year and probably won't be on the February ballot, but it's got to be part of this conversation, at least that initial, even if we don't have hard numbers.
I think we can figure out a way to convince council that we're not going to kick the can with this one. You know, I'd really like to get for Mr. Hoagland to be able to come back plugging these numbers in for the 2023 budget, that the 2023 budget is not going to have any information about the additional hires with the levy-lid lid. Am I missing something there? I mean, there would be the exception of these numbers. So again, I'm happy to have you more time to, to mull it over, but, you know, I want to, I want to have something to present that's close to reality, that perhaps you might want to vote on.
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Moulton?
Thank you. So one of the things that we are, I think, at least I am thinking about, is the letter that we've received from the union representatives. And I would actually like some time to maybe talk to some of those people as well, because that was one of the catalysts for this entire conversation. So for me to try to make a decision right now to say yes, go ahead, when we have till December 31st, none of us want to push it out that far, I feel is doing a disservice to the whole reason we're even having this conversation. So if we wait one week and maybe we get a little information, maybe not, I think that that's fair to everyone involved.
I think it's fair. You know, I'm just trying to move the, move the ball along, so that, that's reasonable. Okay. Mr. Hoagland, was there anything else on the budget?
Oh, yes, the public hearing is still open, so if it pleases Mayor and Council, if you wanted to close the public hearing, I can bring this back under other business next week.
I think we can close the public hearing.
Great, thank you.
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Moulton?
Are we sure?
Okay, all right, no, we're not going, well, let's leave it open, so strike that from the record, Mr. Francioc.
Well, just in case the members of the public who are tuning in tonight might have some things to share.
True, and we, yeah, it's kind of the first time we've, we've, we've brought this back in, so good point. Thank you for keeping me on track.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. All right, so I feel like we can move on to item 7A, other business. Mr. Lunsford's been patiently waiting. We should have had some parks budget questions, but we didn't. So we're going to talk Mount Erie Cell Tower memorandum of agreement with the Anacortes Quanins Club, discussion and possible action, and thanks to some members I see of the Quanins Club for hanging out through this awesome budget discussion.
Thank you, Mayor Miller, council. So you have myself, you have Ms. Swetnam, and you have Mr. Woods and Ms. Richardson on hand. I'll start, and then we can share the discussion with you. So this is a conversation about the memorandum of agreement with the Quanins Club of Anacortes for the Mount Erie cell site, and you have the information in your packet. I'll just go through some of the highlights, then you can ask any question you like. So just to, for refresher, where the cell tower is, many folks know, it's on top of Mount Erie. You can see in the two slides, showing the larger aerial and the specific site. And so in 1951, the Quanins Club of Anacortes donated the summit of Mount Erie to the city of Anacortes for parks purposes. The city entered into an lease with Puget Sound Energy, their current name, Puget Sound Energy, it's probably Puget Sound Power and something at the point, at that time in 1986, to place two towers on the summit. The Quanins Club of Anacortes entered into a separate agreement with PSC in 2001 for revenue from the cell towers. And the city and the Quanins Club would like to collaborate jointly now in negotiating a new lease with PSC. So that lease with PSC has been operating on a month-by-month basis since 2011. So we have been having conversations, myself and Ms. Swetnam, on how to best proceed with that. We engaged with the Quanins earlier this year, how to work collaboratively to come together as one entity to negotiate with PSC, with the city taking the lead through Ms. Swetnam's office. So that is our desire now, is to bring this to you for any questions that you might have, so we can hear those questions. And if you have no changes, then we'd like to proceed with that MOA. I'm happy to take questions. I'm happy to defer questions to some of the other staff or the Quanins.
I see a blue light on. Mr. Young, please.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, this issue has come up any number of times in various discussions. Quite honestly, you know, personally, I think it's long overdue for its review. I think that when we look at the reality of revenues that are being generated, it, I just think this is a, I think I've, Ms. Cleland McGrath sometimes used, if I'm using that right, or is it Ms. Moulton used the term, it's a no-brainer. And I agree with that sentiment in that, you know, it's just time that we re-look at this and see if it's in all of our best interest. I think that personally, from what I do understand about it and in reading this, you know, it is time for a good review. And I personally think that, you know, this memorandum of agreement to come to the table together to figure out how we move this forward is something that I am very happy about.
Thank you, Mr. Young.
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Moulton?
Thank you. In my reading of the contract, it looks like PSC paid a one-time initial fee of $40,000, and then the yearly rent, the yearly lease was $15,000.
So you're looking at the 1986 agreement?
I'm looking at the original. And so I saw that there was a place in there for a CPI increase, and I'm really hoping that that at least has happened, and that we're not still just getting $15,000 a year for the...
No, and Mr. Hoagland can step in, but we have been getting those increases and making those adjustments throughout.
Okay, so is it appropriate to ask how much money the city's receiving now, and how much Quanins is, I mean, can we talk about numbers at all?
I think you can talk about numbers now. I think talking about numbers in the future would be something we'd want to do in a negotiating setting, but currently now, the city earns about $32,000 a year from this, and the Quanins, 36, 37 a year from their end.
Okay, well, that is a relief to me, thank you.
We weren't collecting rent. Good to know.
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Hubick?
How do we find this in OpenGov? Since the information is there, is there a line item to where, if this question comes up, or if I didn't take notes quickly enough, how can I go into OpenGov and find this revenue source?
If I was in the dugout and Mr. Hoagland was up to bat, I think I just heard 108, Fund 108.
Line 108.
It's not just going into revenues and searching PSC, it's literally sometimes just asking staff.
Parks Capital.
Parks Capital, thank you.
Mayor? Mr. Walters?
Well, the proposed MOU going forward looks okay to me. It is a rather complicated situation, you know, given the reversionary interest and everything. Can you explain a little bit more of the history? What happened in 2001? Looks to me from your bullets that PSC had a lease, and then they decided to pay more money to somebody else?
Ms. Richardson, do you want to come give that history?
You can't even see me behind the screen. First of all, I want you to notice this is only four pages, not 300 and so. So that's a very good question. The deed restriction that says the property must be used for park purposes is a key issue here. And it also says, if it ain't used for park purposes, Quanins gets it back, which I don't think either the city or Quanins wants to happen. So over time, there was a, in 1986, there was a Coast Guard tower built that was for communications, their surveillance of submarines or whatever, that was deemed to be not a park purpose but a public purpose. And so it was approved. Then when this city agreement was signed, excuse me, this was for internal communications with Puget Sound, with Puget Sound's power and light or whatever it was then, to communicate with their substations and their offices and their operational stuff. And because they are a utility, this was also deemed to be a public service use. And I don't think it was formally stated that way, but the Quanins back then said, sure, that's okay with us, basically. I wasn't there then. I've been a member for 26 years, but I wasn't back then. So at some point, PSC came to the council, when I was on the council, and said, we want to build a little more facilities up there. And as part of that discussion, it was revealed that they were subleasing on new towers to several cell phone companies and getting revenue from that. And so a couple of Quanins, I won't name names, but they said, no, wait a minute, they make a money off those towers that are supposed to be for park purposes. How is that working? So several Quanins took a couple years browbeating PSC, but saying, you know, we could take that property back. And so as a result, Quanins has been getting one-third of the revenue from the subleases and putting that money into a special account at the Anacortes Parks Foundation, which is only used for park purposes. Now, over the years, since, so that's 21 years, that has amounted to about $600,000. So, you know, a little bit this year, a little more the next year. So it's not insignificant. Both the city and Quanins have had some difficulty getting real numbers out of the PSC folks, and, and they've had staff changes and nobody knows what's going on. And so I think it's to the advantage of Quanins and the city to have one agreement with PSC and to have the city take the lead in negotiating that, because we have good attorneys on staff, we can hire, city can hire an attorney, the city is working with appraisers to figure out what a fair market value of the lease is these days. And so I'm confident that that negotiation will result in something more fair. And as this says, the money that the city and Quanins receives from the future agreement is designated specifically for park purposes. And I think that's important going forward because in 2001, when my colleagues and Quanins got PSC to agree to share some of this fund, which they were not very happy about, who would have guessed that 21 years later I'd be standing here talking to you about it? Well, in another 21 years, there will be other people up here, there will be, I don't know, how long do you plan to work, Darcy? There may be a different city attorney, there will certainly be different staff at PSC. So I think putting things in writing for the future decades is a very important thing to do.
Thank you for that great history lesson of the Mount Erie Cell Tower. All right, any other questions? Mr. Walters?
So I can just follow up. No more questions for this witness, but I do think that this is a creative solution to this problem and a pretty clean way of doing it, and an improvement over what we've had in the past, and it makes sense to me.
Mayor Miller? Mr. Young?
With that said, unless there's additional questions or discussions or points to be made, a move that we approve the MOA with the Anacortes Quanins Club?
Second?
Okay, a motion by Mr. Young, a second by Ms. Moulton, to approve the Mount Erie Cell Tower memorandum of understanding with the Anacortes Quanins Club. Any further discussion? Mr. Francioc, could you take the vote, please?
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougal?
Yes.
Ms. Hubick?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Hey, no further business before the council, and I'm out of water. Thank you. I'd like to enjoy the meeting.